Good for you. All right, with that, I will call to order this meeting at the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. All members are appearing remotely and the meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is public speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? You can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera and raise your real hand. Or unmute and ask to address us. I see nothing. We do have planning board minutes on the agenda, but I don't think the members had a chance to review them. So I think we will put those off till next meeting so we can look them over. And since I am recusing myself from the first two items on the agenda, I will now turn off my camera and come back for later items when Curtis summons me.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, we'll move forward to the first agenda item, which is actually two agenda items continued from October 19th. They are two special permits, one for Fort Hill and one for Birch Family Farm. And according to the vote we had in prior meeting, we'll be holding those and considering them together. Producing results for each individually at the end of the process. We discussed at our last meeting some additional information that requested from Attorney Lane and from the applicant. And I'd like to, just before I ask you to present us what you've got. Inform everyone that's attending tonight that our general process is going to be to get that information from Attorney Lane so that we can all hear what they have to say. And then I will open it up to the public to speak. Attorney Lane, what have you got for us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Zarvis. So I had submitted a letter over the weekend. Explaining first and foremost that our engineer and surveyors are going to need at least another 30 days to complete various plans that they're trying to put together right now. We went through a list of about seven or eight things that needed attention, including a lighting plan, snow removal plans, recalculations for stormwater. Traffic counts. Clear lines of delineation for the recreation area on the Birch Family Farm, delineating that from the business uses that the brewery was making on the farm's parcel. There needed to be plans or something addressing special event planning. And then what I have the impression though, however, is that one of the more pressing issues for neighbors and the public in general are the noise concerns. This evening, I'm here to discuss noise concerns. Otherwise, I'm asking for a continuance for submission and consideration of the other six or seven items that are requiring surveyor and plans.
Okay, why don't you tell us about the one thing you've got some more information for, the noise mitigation?
Great. So, you know, last time we talked it through. And it certainly it's quite clear that this is a continuing concern and probably the most pressing concern for neighbors and butters. And the brewery is sensitive to that and would like to present a plan to try and address these concerns. You know, there was some discussion amongst the board and ourselves about plantings and things like that. And certainly that is going to be part of this, but really, I think the most significant change here would be to, when having outdoor performances, to just reorient the sound. Currently, performers stand with their back to the north wall of the brewery. And sound monitors are facing out towards the row of trees that separates brewery property from the field beyond it. So that's pointing right down towards folks who live at the end of the field. And as we've all been able to attest to, you certainly can hear sound over there. So we feel like if we could reorient the sound so that performers would be with their back to the row of trees that separates the brewery property from the field. And the monitor, sound monitors would be pointing back at the north wall of the brewery. That in itself, I think, would be helpful. There is going to be a line of arborvitae. A dense wall of arborvitae that will be behind the performers as well. That would separate performance space from the parking area and the travel lanes on the north side of the brewery. But then even beyond that, the brewery is now proposing to construct a stage and a sound shed that would really enclose the performers so that I know this is hard to picture without the plans, but we just don't have the full plans yet. But the idea would be that there would be the the drive lanes in the parking area on the north side of the brewery. Then a row of arborvitae. And then inside the row of arborvitae would be a stage that at the moment we're proposing to be about 16 by 20 feet. And it would be fully enclosed on three sides. So immediately in front of the arborvitae would be a wall. Inside the stage, there'd be a shed roof and two sides to that. And then the open, the stage would be open to the dining area and really it'd be in front of the proposed new patio. This way, sound is enclosed and it's being aimed directly at the wall of the brewery. Again, I can only speak from personal experience. When you are on the far side of the brewery coming from coming from east. You know, sound is pretty well muffled, or at least it has been in the times that I've been there. And I understand that there might be neighbors who have a different take on that. I'm just going from my own experience of it. And so the idea would be to contain the sound and direct it back towards the brewery, hoping to further kind of insulate the sound and prevent too much noise from going through the trees and across the fields to the residential street at the end of the field. That's kind of a rough description of it. I'm happy to answer other questions. We will, when we finally submit full plans, this will be depicted. It will touch on some of the parking, but also what's going to be depicted in the new plans is kind of much more detail about parking and parking areas. But so this stage and the plantings might take up some area that's already been used for parking. However, the plan would leave a two-way traffic lane there. So there'd be parking still on the on the far northern side, right along the trees that separate the brewery from the field. And then there'd still be a 20-foot two-way traffic lane there between the between the arborvitae's and the sound area and the back row of parking. Okay, that's the description of it. I'm sure people have questions. I'm sure neighbors still have comments and questions. And I am here to answer as much of that as I can.
All right, before I open up to public speak, I just wanted to get a piece of detail from what you just said there. Clearly, you'll be providing plans for that when you next intend to meet. You did state, if I understand correctly, that you need at least a month. Can you be more specific?
I can be. I think if we get 30 days from today, we should be okay.
And that includes the new plans that you just referred to and all the information that we previously requested?
Yes, absolutely.
Before I open it up to the public to get their commentary, does anyone from the board have any questions? Okay, in that case, oh, sorry, Curtis, I see your hand up.
One thing that the board might want to consider is that this provides the board the opportunity to sound off on potential modifications to these plans before they're depicted on those plans. Since hypothetically, if a plan came forward with amendments to it, it would allow the board to have seen it, having already kind of taken a crack at what it might look like. So if you have any recommendations at this point, it's like a kind of uniquely a good opportunity to potentially make them if you have any thoughts.
It's a good point, and I think after we get the public commentary to inform our decision here, we'll definitely have some additional conversation about it if the board agrees. All right, at this point, I'll take public comment. I don't see enough people here that I think we need to limit it in any way. And I see Counselor Zaret's hand up. Counselor Zaret?
Thank you, interim Chair Zarvis. Thank you, members of the board and members of the planning department, the applicant, their representatives, and our residents who are here. As you know, as I mentioned last time when I spoke in this forum, I don't typically get involved with manners before the planning board. But I've been overwhelmed with concerns from constituents on this matter. And that's the biggest reason why I'm speaking here, to advocate for those who, for multiple reasons, might not feel comfortable being here and others who I think are going to speak as well. I had a number of things to say. I think I'll wait on a lot of those for when those items come up for the postponed issues. I actually want to applaud Attorney Lane for taking into consideration the very real concerns of our residents, my constituents, who, not really even a butters, but we're talking about parcels far removed from the confines of the brewery, certainly all the way down Clapp Street. I've heard from a number of residents there who can audibly hear lyrics when there's some loud amplified music. And I think that it seems like it's sinking in that this is a real issue. And I appreciate that you're hearing my constituents, our residents on this matter. I think the preliminary plans that you outlined do sound like you're addressing the issue of noise as a nuisance. And it certainly is a nuisance. My concerns on that and recommendations I would suggest would be as follows. There are a number of metal structures, including, I believe, the brewery itself, as well as the the containers on the outlined parts of the property. I think, I feel that some sort of professional sound evaluation needs to be conducted along with this, especially if you're going to spend the money building a stage, that there's a number of acoustic buffering materials that can be placed around parcels like this, whether it be for industrial noise or for music. Just a quick Google search brings those up. I think you might need some buffering materials on the buildings itself so that directing noise towards those metal buildings does not then cause reflection of the noise. A proper sound study, I think, would be the best thing by some form of sound engineer to make this proposal successful. Those are my biggest concerns, and this is certainly a nuisance. We've been talking about this for a while. I do feel like the applicant and his representatives are hearing this and are making recommendations to abate it. That's really all I think my constituents have been asking from the start. Hear our concerns, address them. We want to enjoy the peace of quiet of our homes, and we also want the brewery to be successful with outdoor music. So I think if you can make the appropriate adjustments, and if the board would consider appropriate noise abating and noise muffling materials or surrounds, I think that this could be a win for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Definitely appreciate that. It's interesting to hear about the constituents you're referring to from Clapp Street. We hadn't, I believe, had that presented to us before, so that's good to know. And I think that underscores the seriousness of the sound issue and gives us some additional information we didn't have. I did see, before I continue to see who else wants to speak next, that someone commented in chat, and thank you, Curtis, for letting them know that that we don't actually respond to comments that go in chat. So if you could please refrain from doing that because it isn't recorded. It's not an appropriate way for us to present information to the city and to the board. The appropriate way is for you to speak now. Who would like to be next? And you can hit star six or star nine on your phone. You can raise a hand. You can simply show your video or unmute and tell me you want to speak. Any of those? Hi, I see someone there. L, I believe.
Hi, this is Laura Fisher, 61 Clapp Street. I appreciate Peter Lane's input on this. Thank you. I would really request that, like, some sort of engineer sign off on these plans for a stage. I'd like to see the incorporation of, you know, sound deadening material, things like that. It's fine. I'd like the brewery to be able to have live music. What I don't want is it to, you know, sort of negligently now be echoing off the building. So just please incorporate like a sound engineer or someone who's a professional on these matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Again, star six, star nine, unvideo, simply unmute and tell me you'd like to speak. Anyone? I see City Planner Jeff Beck.
I was just trying to wait to make sure no one else wanted to speak. I too want to commend the applicant for kind of taking this approach. I think it's showing things going in the right direction, which I'm very positive, I'm feeling positive about. I think the sound engineer idea is good. It would be good, you know, I, it would be good to understand the impetus for the proposal. And I think the echoing sound is one of the things. We just want to make sure that we're not going to actually just create an echoing, like a chamber effect, that kind of thing. But one thing I wanted to offer to the board and, you know, members of the public and kind of an approach, you know, coming out of this in the next couple of meetings is the idea that there should be this proposal. Hopefully with some sound engineer support. And I think the planning board has kind of a couple of good models now to, you know, if we're all feeling that this is the way forward to issue the permit, presumably we would issue the right for the live music to continue. But in the past, the board has had sort of a management plan attached to parts of the use. So, you know, because I think what would be very useful for all parties is a review period sometime next summer. You know, after this proposal has been utilized, not that the board would necessarily take away the right for music, but could make tweaks and have the applicant come back in and understand how is it going? Are there things we could continue to tweak and change? The most recent example that the board has is for our cannabis establishments. You know, when they were first opening, there were waves of traffic and concerns about how people would be congregating outside. And what they had was a management plan for that first initial rush. And then, you know, the opportunity for an updated management plan when things settle down and we could understand how things would operate in the future. So I think if the trajectory continues this way, I would propose that the board talk about, you know, some kind of like review period next summer. Not necessarily to take away the permit, but to make sure that the mitigation is working. So that would be that we would want to build a check and balance on this one. I think we would all agree that the 2017 permit didn't really have any kind of check. It just was like, we'll do this. And then, so that might be something we can do a little bit better than we did last time.
Thank you, Jeff. That's interesting. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, I think we've covered everyone. So if it's all right with the board, I'd like to put some questions out. If you have any questions, you can let me know. But at this point, I would just want to focus on what we're dealing with right now, which is the sound. I'd also like to commend Attorney Lane for coming up with a solution that is a great start with this horseshoe-shaped shed and the redirection. I'm very curious, and as I stated in the last meeting, no one on this board, to my knowledge, is really certified to properly assess sound mitigation. So I'm very curious as to, is it just, is it wood? Is it metal? Things like that. And the plans are interesting. Is there any kind of, you know, foam or baffling or anything in there that's going to help reduce the sound? Those are the kinds of things I'd like to see in there. There's this question of, do we need a sound engineer? I'm, you know, for me, this is, you know, I get that people want it. And like I just said, we don't have the ability to properly assess, is the shed good enough? Was a plexiglass wall good enough? Is, or rather, arborvitae is good enough? So I think it's a good idea. I'd like you to do it, but I'm not sure exactly how even we would assess that. Like, what are they going to tell us? They're going to give us a certain decibel level? They're simply going to say it's under the state mandate? There's no bar that I'm understanding what that grants us. And I'm wondering if anyone here on the board, or frankly, from the public or our planners, can help me assess how we'll evaluate that bar? What will we get from this study? Danny, you want to take that or do you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, I can just, I'll just just give a little bit of insight on it. So obviously, our zoning ordinance is kind of qualitative in nature. Just, I don't have it quoted, but I believe it's essentially just, you know, noise levels are you know, not a nuisance and within reasonable hours or something of that nature. So there's no real kind of quantitative measurement you can hold the applicant to, to say, is he really violating it? That's pretty subjective. Or arguably subjective. But the Department of the Environmental Protection for the State of Massachusetts, my line of work as an environmental engineer for construction companies, hot mix asphalt plants, obviously not bars or restaurants, but same laws that we follow for my my line of work is the state just requires you to be under 10 decibels above ambient. So you would just take a noise evaluation during ambient times, typically like 3:00 or 4:00 a.m. You get a decibel reading of what that surrounding area is with no noise impacts. And then you simply stand at the property line with a decibel meter. And if you're below 10 decibels, then whatever you're doing on your site is within the law, according to the Department of Environmental Protection of Massachusetts. Now, actual engineering to reduce noise, I can weigh in on an industrial sense. I'm not sure about acoustic music at a brewery. So I will just withhold any suggestions because it would just be me kind of guessing at it. So.
Yeah.
And that's essentially what I found for codes and laws, which I believe are easy for myself to enforce, would be, here's a code, here's a law.
Right. Right. And so Mr. Zarvis, so what would, what typically happens with a sound engineer is that they'll model the structure and the building. And they will create, they'll put in whatever decibel level, say that a band would, you know, typically a band might be, say, 100 decibels or 110 decibels or something like that. And then they would actually model the sound waves coming off of the structure in the building to see how far you might get down to 70, 60, 50 decibels and where those sound waves are on the piece of property to see where the, you know, where the the sound would be down to an acceptable decibel level. So that's a way to show visually kind of what the impact is of the structure and, you know, band playing during a typical evening.
Yes, that'd be a predictive case.
Yeah. Very informative and super helpful. Am I to understand, Danny, that you've done one of these before?
Yeah, but not a predictive model like Chris is talking about. But I've just done it in practice at one of our facilities, Johnston Asphalt in Rhode Island, a facility that my company owns that we had a similar noise complaint. So I did, the decibel meter costs you all of 180 bucks on Amazon. That's fully certified, calibrated, all of that. And you just literally go, I had a professional surveyor show me the property line. Stood on the property line, read the decibel meter. And again, we did, myself and I have a coworker that's that's a 30-year professional engineer. I'm just, I'm only a 10-year experienced professional engineer. So he helped me do the ambient portion of it, and we did it at 4:00 a.m. So.
All right. The model would be by like an actual sound engineer company that has an actual model. And it would probably be only maybe a couple thousand bucks max to do a, to model the existing conditions and then propose conditions. And then see how it would impact the site. So they would have a model that would do that. It's not something we could do, obviously. Okay. And I did see for a moment there, Counselor Zaret's hand up again. Did you want to add something to that?
I think they covered most of it. I think what the board member was referring to, just so you can look it up, is 310 CMR 7.1, which talks about a violation from the D P's concern of 10 decibels above ambient. And I think frankly, this is pretty close to what the, I can't, I don't, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is what the residents have been asking for. I do think clearly there's a subjective component here, and that plays into what the the planner had mentioned too, with the reevaluation period. I think, you know, there's still, you know, nuisance unfortunately does have some subjectivity to it. But I think that everything that I'm hearing is kind of moving towards a reasonable plan. You know, for, for noise mitigation, for sound mitigation. And this is a professional commercial application. You know, if you need lighting, you hire an electrician. If you need water, you hire a plumber. If you're dealing with sound, you need a sound engineer. It shouldn't just be kind of haphazard. And so I think, I feel it's reasonable and they clearly will know what they're doing. They've probably done this before. Just quickly too, and I won't take up much more of your time. Appreciate being able to speak again. In some of my research around this matter, I do know that our Board of Health has had to do a couple of enforcements dealing with the similar type of issue, industrial equipment that was too loud and having to take ambient measurements and then make a decibel determination. So they're semi-familiar with this. I'd also, I don't know enough about ambient sound, so someone out there can correct me if I'm wrong. But I would take in consideration what the ambient sound is at the times that people are actually experiencing noise as a nuisance. But if that's not the way it should be measured, then I apologize. But it sounds like people are heading in a direction of appropriate consideration here, reducing nuisance and mitigating noise. Allowing people at the brewery to enjoy music and the neighbors who, especially those far away, who want some peace and quiet to enjoy that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. And I think I speak for the board when I say we all agree. Chris?
Just in response to that, that's true. Counselor Zaret, we did that with adhesive applications, that we had them go out and do an ambient and then, you know, the same reading during, when the plant was fully active to see what that difference was. I think that that's, that's something that we could do once, like after the shed's built, to see if it actually succeeded in, you know, reducing the ambient, the noise to less than 10 decibels above ambient, once it's constructed. So it's a good thing to do, maybe as Jeff indicates, to do as a follow-up, yeah.
That's smart. I like that. It's interesting. So by that, do you kind of require the study beforehand and then test it after? Or do you, do we sort of approve, given that we all do, the design of this horseshoe building and the management? And then as part of the management process, six months later, have a full study done? Are you, is there a recommendation there?
So.
Either way.
What we know, what Chris was proposing before, it's kind of like you hire a consultant or an expert that does a computer-based modeling. It's theoretical, but it's fairly accurate. And that would essentially help the client or the, sorry, help the individual, the applicant, applicant, sorry, I was talking about engineering terms here. It would help him be able to start off with a design that is most likely going to work. And then what I was talking about and what Mr. Zaret and, you know, with the Board of Health, taking measurements, that's just like a real world application of of like, is it working? Is it effective? Is it now actually in practice working? It's like having an electrician design the lights, but then going out there with a candle, you know, meter to measure the candle power of the light once it's installed and operating. So it's like both of them will work, one's more theoretical to get your design. As a starting point, the other one is how well did it actually perform once? So they're, but they're both, you should, they both have their own.
Both, okay. All right, good to know. All right. So it sounds like Attorney Lane that, and I haven't heard from anyone else. If anyone disagrees on the board, you should let me know. But it sounds like we're going to want to have this professional study done and a follow-up later, that that's something that we'll be looking at, say, a six-month process. I'm tossing that out. It may require an additional discussion. That process would be after the site was developed, you have this new horseshoe-shaped shed in play, and it's been in use for six months. We'd have you come back with a new study saying this is how it's performing. How amenable are you to this?
Well, I have obviously not had the opportunity to discuss this with my client, but I, I would recommend to my client that we uh, that we, uh, do as the board is requesting. Um, I, I can't commit my client's stack because I haven't had the opportunity to discuss it, but, um, I can tell the board that would be my recommendation, uh, because I can see, and I think my client understands this now very well, uh, is that this issue is not going to go away. Um, and it really does seem to be the one that is most pressing for the public, um, and for the board and considering the, uh, the other aspects of the application. Um, I also think my client fully understands that, um, it's to the company's benefit to just have, no pun intended, harmony within the community. Um, so I really didn't mean the pun, but I appreciate the laugh.
It was a good pun. It was a good pun.
It's appreciated.
Indeed, yeah, and I'm ecstatic to hear that. I'm sorry, Danny, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mr. Lane, I would just suggest that you, you know, you, that just point you to, um, like mentioned before, three ten CMR seven from the Department of Environmental Protection. And that's essentially where I think the framework lies for a good, uh, best practice. And I think it's just unfortunate that we've got the zoning, the zoning district right, literally adjacent to a residential district. And I think that's what's causing the issue here, like, you know, with sound. It's just the, just the way that it's all laid out and that's that part of town, unfortunately, so.
These are, these are the tensions of, uh, you know, industrial and residential so close together.
Of course, of course.
All right, so, um, with that in mind, please consider that a recommendation from the board, that those are things we are going to be seeking when we talk about our thirty day return. Uh, and, uh, you know, I'll summarize that again when we're done tonight. But unfortunately, I think I still have one aspect of sound that I'd like to bring up. Uh, and that is that there's a, a supposed non-use that's not supposed to be happening or is only for personal use of a motorcycle. Um, and I was under the impression that that wasn't going to be happening while we're in the meeting and we received a video, the board received a video indicating that it was happening. It's clear that it's loud in, in the videos. As I mentioned in the last meeting, the noise coming from that is a big concern to me. Um, but I think too that, um, I, I, Curtis, is it true that you went to the attorney and have something to, to say there on that matter?
Yeah, the, um, planning staff forwarded the inquiry to the city attorney just for an authoritative opinion and whether or not that constituted a breach of the cease and desist orders issued to Birch Family Farms and, uh, thirty Fort Hill Road. And the short answer is essentially no. The cease and desist order, um, pertains to future site work on the site. Um, the board obviously can take whatever opinion they would want.
Okay, thank you for that. So, you know, we looked into it, uh, on these claims to see, you know, where our rights are. It's not apparently within the cease and desist. So that just means, you know, my comments to you are, you know, this is a very difficult situation. We don't really have purview over a non-claimed use. It, we're not enforcement. It's not really our role. But I think it's appropriate to say that as we're looking at sound, any additional sound you're generating during this time is problematic for us. And having videos of loud motorcycle sounds as part of this, you know, one of the two properties we're looking at right now, uh, that doesn't bode well. Uh, that's my opinion. Does anyone else on the board have an opinion?
Uh, not an opinion.
How many, how many more motorcycles are, are going to be on that track? You know, we see one. There's no guarantee that he's not going to have, the applicant isn't going to have two, three, four, five, six bikes um, going around that track.
Danny?
No, I was just going to state, I, I thought that there had been a mention of it in the narrative that was submitted during the last meeting, but I don't want, I would like to have myself just review that again for speaking on it. I thought that there was a mention of that. Um, but I just wanted to say, since I had it in front of me, I was looking up earlier if there, you know, what the uses were. So I checked the East Hampton Table of Use Recommend Regulations, just for everybody's, uh, information. I found that under the retail and service, I think this would fall under item thirty-nine from the best that I saw. I didn't quite see any, uh, dirt bike use specifically, but they had all other outdoor amusement recreation service. And for an industrial, it looks like that's a, obviously a special permit requirement. So, you know, obviously that use is not, I'll just confirm that it's not permitted or that the special use has not been approved for that permit. So I, that's, that's my only comment on it is it's, you know, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that my sense, Attorney Lane, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that by saying it's for private, uh, for, for private use, is you're trying to not have it permitted and basically saying that there's no real use here, uh, that, that would be under our purview. And Danny just seemed to indicate that any use that involves, uh,
Special recreation.
Special recreation, yeah. Uh, so I, I, I think that that's dangerously close to a line, um, and it's unnecessary in this project. So I would definitely recommend to, to you that you recommend to your applicant that, you know, that that use be removed entirely. Uh, so, any other comments on that from anyone in the board? Okay, so there are a lot of other issues that we had to go over from stormwater to a lighting plan to the very use that I just described. Um, but these are all things that obviously we'll have to talk about when you have the right information. I don't see any need, unless someone has new additional information they want to bring up to cover these things again until we have the information before us. Anyone agree or have any other thing they want to add? I see Danny. Oh, no, Curtis.
I see a hand up from a John Hayden.
Oh, thank you. I missed that. My apologies. Mr. Hayden.
Well, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, I thought that the, um, the motorcycles would be part of the other permit discussion, so I didn't say anything before. But I think my only point is that the applicant is, I believe the applicant is a corporation, the seventeen seventy-six brewing and, or Birch Family Farms. And I think it's confusing to, to think that they, a corporation would have a personal use, uh, be it motorcycles or whatever. So I think that kind of goes in with like, uh, that doesn't make sense to me. So anyway, I just wanted to put that in.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden, and I, I tend to agree to your comment about the, um, the confusion between the permits looking as if it's a second agenda item. Um, I'll state it again just in case, because I do think that's something that could potentially be confusing. In our earliest meeting in this, we voted to hold these hearings together and at the end, and discuss them together. And then at the end, we'll come out with separate conditions or findings as appropriate. Um, so we're discussing them as one.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. Did you have anything else?
No, I think that's good for now.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, at this point then, uh, if there's nothing in particular, I see, uh, City Planner Jeff Bang.
Sorry, I was trying to jump in because it sounded like you were going to go for like a wrap-up. I just, um, you know, understanding that the board doesn't really have other information in front of them. Um, I think the use of the motorcycles is, you know, is going to be a discussion at the future meeting. Um, so, you know, I won't belabor it, but, but I think that there's going to be a lot of questions about the frequency of use. Um, what does constitute personal use? Um, is, is, is the size kind of like, you know, things, things about the motorcycle, since it's, it's being not like, nothing's being provided tonight, I just think it's delaying the discussion of that for the future meeting. I just wanted to kind of put that out there for that statement.
I tend to agree. I definitely want to have the plans in front of me. I'm sorry, Attorney Lane, I, I just restate this. But, you know, I, I think we do need to get into the nitty-gritty with that, but I think the plans will be helpful. Please, go ahead, Attorney Lane.
Uh, 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 that's all, that I fully expect that we're going to have a discussion about, uh, the details of the actual use. Just following up, uh, on, um, uh, one of the board members', uh, comments about the last narrative. Uh, it is truly unclear to me whether, uh, personal use, uh, it requires special permit. Um, under the zoning, uh, table, yes. Uh, in the section on, uh, recreational uses, um, uh, and I believe service and retail. Section five-three, table five-one, retail and service, number thirty-nine refers to recreational uses. Um, I, I don't want to belabor this, Mr. Zarvis, I heard what you said. I heard the board's opinion is that even if it's personal use, it feels to the board like it is approaching the line of the unpermitted use. Um, I, of course, agree with the city's attorney that this is not a violation, uh, that this, you know, that, uh, this, this individual, uh, use of a motorcycle was not at this moment a violation of the cease and desist. Um, I, I can't say much more about it at this moment, uh, because frankly, this is the first I'm hearing of it. And, uh, we will absolutely, however, uh, in the, in the name of transparency and in the name of cooperation and communication, be prepared to discuss fully what the, uh, personal, what the intended personal use is, uh, on the bike track. Um, I'm sure we'll be having a full discussion about days, times, numbers of motorcycles at any one moment. Um, I fully expect the board to, if they were even, um, uh, going to approve this, to have some serious concerns and, um, conditions that they would want to place on, on, on any use, uh, of a motorcycle track. So, um, all that to say, uh, thank you for bringing this to my attention and to just confirm that we will be prepared to have a full detailed discussion about this, uh, when we make final submissions.
Thank you, Attorney Lane. Okay, uh, so Counselor Zaret, are you still there?
I am, sir.
Uh, you did present, uh, an email to the city and I get the sense that you are sort of presenting that, uh, verbally. Did you want me to read that into the record or can I refer to that as being available on the city website?
You can refer to it as being available on the city of the website. I think there were some salient, some of the salient points in there are addressing items that we're going to be talking about in the future. So I think if people want to, um, and forgive me for the misspellings, um, but if people want to refer to it, I, I think it's fine. I think I represented most of the topics, um, that were relevant to the discussion tonight, tonight. And, uh, as we come back, uh, in thirty days, I'll address the other issues then.
Thank you, Counselor. And, uh, we referenced a video earlier. I want to note that that's also on the city website. Curtis, as we did last meeting, I'll ask you to throw, and it's not recorded in chat. You have to go to the city website, to the Planning Department page. You can see links for this. For those that are here, the only way we really have to present that to you is either, Curtis, you can share your screen, I guess, and show where the link is, uh, how, how you get there. If you could just present to people how you get there while I continue talking here. Uh, Attorney Lane, I'd like to just do a wrap-up. We don't have much today. We're going to have to pick a date, thirty days out. But before I do, I just want to cover a couple of things that are expectations. We're definitely going to expect to talk about the, the motorcycle issue again and the use. We're definitely going to want to, um, be pushing the concept that there's going to be a professional sound study, uh, which will influence the design of that shed. We're going to want details on that shed, uh, as to how it mitigates. We're going to want to have a sixty, I'm sorry, six-month follow-up, a management process that we'd condition in. Well, we're not, the, the permit will already be approved, but we have a, a check-in where we can see how things are going uh, with regard to sound and we'll want an additional, uh, sound check as a part of that process. Those are expectations and summary, uh, that we discussed tonight, in addition to everything else that we went over in the previous meeting. Uh, any comments about that, Attorney Lane? Okay.
No, I don't have any comments about that. Uh, that sounds right. That seems consistent with my notes. Uh, and it's just to make clear, the last thing you just said was these points, motorcycle, uh, use, sound engineer study, six-month follow-up management process, uh, to be discussed, all in addition to what was previously requested at the October meeting.
Yes, and thank you. Okay, uh, so at this point, I'll just let Curtis give a quick one round of what you're looking at there.
So anybody who can access plans and, uh, correspondence, including correspondence that's been referenced in this meeting, um, by going to, uh, just typing in easthamptonma.gov slash planning board. You'll note that that's an abbreviated version of this URL up here, so it'll take you directly to this page. Halfway down the page, you see a thing that says current applications and agenda items. Clicking on any of these links, um, will take you to the appropriate agenda item. And this one in the new tab opened up, uh, thirty-four hill. And into the correspondence folder here, you can see all correspondence associated with the project, usually named either by the specific name given by a correspondent, or if but no one has been provided, um, by me, just given the date and the name, public comment, as you can kind of see here. Um, feel free to.
Thank you, yep. So, uh, this helps me not have to read everything in. Everyone's able to access that and go in, although some of the stuff has been read in. At this point, we should figure out when the date we're going to meet next is. Curtis, what do you have, uh, next, it's thirty days out at least? Obviously, it's, what, January?
The sixth, I think.
Yes, it would be January sixth would be the, the first, actually, no, the, the first, uh, Tuesday in January is the fourth.
So that would be twenty, twenty-eight days.
Right, if we wanted to do a minimum of thirty, then it would be, uh, the eighteenth. And then the following in, uh, February would be Tuesday, February first, Tuesday, February fifteenth.
So it looks like fourth or eighteenth, Attorney Lane. Do you have a preference?
Uh, yeah, I would take the eighteenth. I would ask that we have until the, the, the fourth to, um, to submit the plans. That's all right.
That works for me. All right, so if there's any other. Okay, there's any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to continue the two special permit public hearings till January eighteenth, six PM.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an I. All right, we'll see you, uh, in January. Thank you very much. And I think it's time to summon Jesse. He's there.
All right, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is Matt Gall seeking a site plan approval for the existing Hurry and Scurry Building at one eighteen Union Street. Is there someone here to speak to that?
Hi, uh, I'm Terry Reynolds, representing, uh, Matt Gall, T. Reynolds Engineering. Um, so, um, if you'd like, I can start and give an overview of what's there and where we're going with it.
That'd be perfect. Thanks, Terry.
Okay, can I share my screen?
Yep, you've just been given co-host. You can share your screen.
Great, all right. So this is the current hurry, scurry. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
This is generally a condemned building. It's been here for quite a, quite a while in an unused state. Um, this building is proposed to be taken down. It currently has, you know, the sidewalk in front and what was a paved area out front here. Uh, a driveway connects, uh, to the rear lot here, um, that serves, uh, the auto parts store on the right here and, and is jointly an access to get behind the building. Um, so, I'll go to our plans.
Doron to sound excited. The public has waited a long time for this to happen.
So, this is, uh, the existing conditions plan of, of what's there. This is the Hurry, Scurry, one eighteen Union Street. Uh, this is Union Street out front. Uh, in back here, it's, oops, um, is a, uh, small parking lot, um, which is paved here with a loading dock that serves, uh, one oh eight and one twelve, a parts store. Um, and then, uh, a little grass strip right, right along in here. And then there is an encroaching parking lot, uh, to the east of it. So currently what's being proposed is to, uh, demolish that, the existing building and rebuild with a multi-use building. Um, and that building, um, is going to be retail on the first floor and, um, residential, two residential apartments on the second floor. And so, basically, uh, what's being proposed is a, is an entrance for one of the commercial units here. Are both of them actually, uh, right in the left unit, um, uh, some plantings out front. Um, and then access for the residential second floor units right here, uh, and then emergency egress and back. Um, currently, we've got eight spaces proposed in behind the store. This is going to reclaim out to the property line with a small bank and additional plantings in the grass areas adjacent to the building. Additionally, what, to meet the parking requirements, four additional spaces are being allocated of the Union Street parking lot, which is also owned by the Galls. So both these areas, this area here, and the Union Street parking is not part of the lot for the Hurry and Scurry. So both of these have use agreements that have been prepared to, for ongoing parking that will serve this building. So in terms of utilities, there will be a stormwater system installed in the parking lot that consists of a catch, deep-sump catch basin, a water quality unit tying into the street system on Pace Nav. Right now, minimal lighting is proposed, and I'll show you a photometric of that. And basically, a new electric service will come to the building. And then existing sewer will continue from the front of the building. So that's, that's mainly it. We have minimal lighting, one pole being proposed in the back just for safety lighting in this parking lot here. That is it. With me, I can also bring up selected to bring to you is our building design plan. So let me share that. And what I want to show you will be our building allocations. I'm sorry, my lines. Sorry, bear with me.
If you want, I do actually have the building plans up, whichever you prefer.
So this is the rendering of the building. So basically, two-story building. This is the east side view with the stairs in the back of the building, shed over the stairway. This is the front view, north view, with the two entrances, windows for the retail space and a residential door, the residential units upstairs. And then it's clad, clad building. Again, this is, this is from the alleyway, west side. Standard cutoff lighting for, for the entrance ways. Will, you know, as I said, minimal proposed. That's basically what we're looking at. This is our floor plan for the retail spaces downstairs, this big open space, the utility in the back, and then our residential units upstairs. As you can see. That'll refer anybody's questions.
Sure. James?
See, I'm actually sure that we have the same questions. You want to go first?
No, by all means, please, take it on.
Okay, we probably all do. So where's the waste disposal?
It's gonna, there, there's not a dumpster proposed. It's just individual waste disposal at this point. A dumpster can be located in the rear of the building.
Can be? It's not something you're planning on, or I mean?
Currently, we're not proposing one. But it certainly can be located right right here in this space adjacent to.
And I think the business use, I mean, maybe not, I guess residential, that's something that would need discussion. What about snow removal?
Snow removal, there, there is space in here and in here for snow removal. Anything additional will have to get hauled off.
Okay, and, you know, normally I wouldn't say this, but after seeing that first picture, is there a plan for regular leaf management on the property?
Well, there aren't any, there aren't going to be significant trays. There, there are two trays to remain out front. And that's it. The rest of it is our small shrubs.
And then with regard to parking, you showed how you were making the allotted parking. Curtis, do you have any numbers for this mixed-use requirement for us prepared?
Yes, so Engineer Reynolds came in for a pre-application meeting and during discussions, they proposed a number of different retail uses, all of which use the same one-for-three-hundred-square-feet calculation for parking spaces. So I agree, it's like eleven and a decimal number of spaces that they require in total for a total of twelve. I think that the zoning table actually does have the accurate breakdown of spaces that are required.
And it's one handicap spot, minimum?
It is, it is one handicap spot required for the, the retail use. And it must be located in a way that is accessible to the front entrance for the retail, which means that it's located down the street at the closest possible publicly available parking spaces rather than behind the structure.
That meets the need?
My under, my understanding, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not coming from a perspective where I can really adjudicate the eighty-eight standards, is that it does. The, the plans will be subject to review by the building commissioner at some point, and she may, she may comment otherwise. And then they could potentially relocate the space.
Mr. Reynolds, you are planning on striping that handicap?
Isn't there a distance, isn't there a distance requirement for that handicap spot? Or there used to be a distance requirement from the handicap spot to the door. It couldn't be more than like two hundred feet or something. Is it, is it still within that distance requirement, or have they eliminated that?
I think we are within two hundred feet, I would say. We're probably close to it. I'm not sure about that.
Sure, again, as someone who's, this is like a little outside of my bailiwick, but when I look for handicap placement location and review, I'm looking for whether it can make, it's, it, I know that it needs to be the closest space accessible to the public access way, and this actually does qualify for that, that they couldn't locate it quote closer without developing a different site.
It does seem logically reasonable, and there's a sidewalk right there so that they could get in, and it's important to meet the requirement. But it's also important to see this building in East Hampton renovated. So do you have any ideas about the use for the, I mean, you're saying multi-use. Do you have any tenants in mind? What do you think might go in there?
At this point, there are no specific tenants of this space.
All right, I'm gonna stop hogging the floor and let you take some, Jesse.
Terry, can I ask, so the driveway that comes out on Union Street, is that still gonna be the access point? I'm just a little confused about like.
No, that is not, that, that is, uh, just, it is not a primary access at all. The primary access for the back parking lot is off Payson. And then, you know, it's just foot traffic into the front. This is, the, the access right here is, is an existing curb cut, and they're just not proposing to remove it at this point.
Is there gonna be signage or something to, to clarify that that's not, I'm just assuming people will, of course, as soon as it's open, drive in that way, and it looks like there's cars actually parked at the other side. So is there gonna be some notification, or are you just gonna hope for the best on that?
Hadn't really addressed it. Could put signage up. I could, that I don't think is an issue. I think the desire would be to continue to have the access back there to serve that building for any service that needs to be done to it. So completely removing it didn't seem like, you know, a desirable option.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that it's necessarily like a safety concern. It'll probably just be a hassle, and you guys will be as motivated as anybody to make sure that doesn't happen. It just, I'm, I'm sure as soon as you don't want people to use that driveway, that's where everyone will drive in. So I just wondered if it'd come up, yeah.
It may become a, a location for the dumpster to sit if, should they want one.
Gotcha, okay. Any other questions from planning board members?
I think I just mentioned, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Danny?
Yeah, yeah, just, I was looking at the site here and just, just curious. So I see you've got a pretty flat site in the back, and it's just like, I was just curious why maybe you didn't step down another contour or two for your catch basin and your ultimate drainage? Was it just, were you just having issues trying to get a gravity connection into the, the sewer and Payson? Or, you know, I'm just thinking if it does, you know, if you get leaf litter or snow or just for whatever other, you know, number of reasons you get a backup there, you're just gonna flood your whole site. It's as flat as a pancake based on the, the two contours you're showing. Unless, unless my printer just didn't print out some like lighter colored pre-existing contours, and maybe those are just the only two proposed. I just can't see it very well. So that was like just one issue I saw. I'm assuming that that's a vortex unit. Correct me if I'm wrong that you're proposing. So if, if so, I would hope you have some kind of a, a management plan, because those are notorious for, for failing and actually poor performance. So just see if you, whoever's gonna maintain this site has a, you know, kind of a timetable for how, how often they're gonna maintain those, that unit, if it is a vortex. And then I just didn't, I just couldn't understand where the stormwater is gonna go on the sides of your building. And then obviously, I believe the front would probably just utilize some of the, the facilities on Union Street as well. But I, and I don't know where your gutters are coming off of for roof runoff and how you're gonna channel that. So I just didn't know if there was a potential you could somewhat like kind of coerce the water a little bit more into that catch basin with just like a very small depression or a swell, or even just stepping the contour down a little bit more.
Well, frankly, I, I think we actually have pretty good pitch out there. That, that is over two percent in that parking lot area.
Is it, is it just the contours aren't being shown then on the plan, or is that?
Well, we've got, the basin itself is at one fifty-nine-six. We've got a one sixty contour around that area. On the west side, it goes up to one sixty-one. And then on the east side, for it's also raised up another, another foot, and it looks like for some reason this plan's missing the spot grade right there. But.
Yeah, I can print them out to scale and hand scale it, but like an inch over whatever it is, maybe ten or twenty feet. I don't know if that is two percent or not off the top of my head, but it's just a concern. I, I, you know, it's that's all.
This, this is designed, I, I'm not concerned about it not draining. If, if this were to actually back up, it's, it's either gonna go down the alley or out into the street. The other thing is, is the grade is fixed, being able to tie it into the street system in, in Payson Ave.
Right, well, you can always adjust the outlet on your catch basin that you select, but it depends. I don't know. I don't have enough information here to comment any further on it, just more or less seeing what you took into consideration. And if you've got calculations to support that, that's great, so.
This is not subject to a stormwater permit. This is not creating a significant amount of previous area. Did review this with Dan Murphy. Dan felt very comfortable with it. He was happy with, with this.
Okay, fair enough.
All set, Danny?
Thank you.
All right, Jim?
Before I begin with my other question, you said you did review this with Dan Murphy. Did he provide a letter for this?
I, I threw that to Curtis.
I haven't seen it.
No letter. I do know that he reviewed it. We, we discussed it briefly. No, he didn't raise any issues conversationally that, that really alerted us to anything. Specifically asked him about the utilities on-site and drainage.
So this is new construction, they're tearing down what's also, I believe, and I'm just making a statement here. Normally in downtown business, parking would be grandfather, it's the wrong term really, but you, you wouldn't have to, but because this is a new construction, this does have to meet all the parking requirements. I, I think that's, should correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, Jim.
And then the other thing that is, I'd like to know about your timeline for development. I bet we're all curious if you get this approval. How long is it gonna take to, to make that happen?
I'd like to start building this in the spring.
Do you have any idea about the development time?
I, I don't. I would anticipate this is about a three-month project to get the building up.
Okay, thank you very much. That was all my questions.
Any other planning board questions or comments?
Just a couple of questions. The apartment, how big are the apartments gonna be? A two-bedroom, one-bedroom?
I believe they're two-bedroom.
Okay.
I can open that up and show you.
And also, the entrance on Union Street, that's a shared driveway, you said, right, with the business next to it?
Yes, it was, it's not a really dri, it's not, I mean, there's a driveway, but it isn't used that way. It's not, it's not used for access to the rear of the building. Access to that parking lot in the rear building comes off of Payson Avenue.
Well, that's off.
You know, there, there may be the stray car here or there that currently goes there, on my, I don't know. I'm rarely.
I was thinking that if there might be, if there was a fire or something like that, a, a fire engine could not, a fire truck could not get, I don't think that a fire truck could properly navigate through there.
Well, they can, a fire truck can drive through there.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a, you know, they, they would have to drive in and then back out if there's a car in there.
Right, so let's talk about parking. What if, you know, it's a small business, sometimes they, they look at that driveway, not really a driveway, but, and they park in that driveway. Will there be like no parking signs there? Or no parking?
At this point, nothing had, had been proposed.
Because I'm just concerned that, you know, cars are gonna be parked right there. And if there was an emergency, it's only one of two roads going in. Or one of two driveways going in.
Yeah. Go ahead, Curtis.
So the site actually enjoys a unique advantage as compared to other sites where you'd normally have to access it completely by a driveway, which is in an emergency circumstance, a fire apparatus can set up on either of the two streets directly in front of or behind it and gain three hundred and sixty-degree access to the building that way.
All right. That's good to know. Okay.
Ooh, I'm sure it would be a short response.
Yeah, I was gonna say the, the fire's like right across the street, so. Good, good point though, Ken, but.
And I want to make clear, I can, I can't speak to the concern of the fire department here, but I, I did dialogue. The fire chief was present during dialogue at the pre-application meeting and stated as much in, in dialogue then. So my expectation is that there, or Captain Constantine, not the fire chief. My expectation is that they would probably just gain access on either the two public right-aways, set up at a safe distance and hit it with water.
Yeah, my only concern was cars parked there and, and, and an emergency happened, so, okay.
Those apartments that Ken brought up, he had some great questions there. Are those market rate?
Yes.
I believe that is the intent. Yes.
Any other planning board questions or planning department? All right, any members of the public with, oh, I'm sorry, Curtis, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I have a brief point of order that I'm just gonna add to the, the public record here. This is the subject of a variance from the East Hampton Z B A to approve the demolition and reconstruction on the existing footprint, which is too close to the side setbacks. I believe in both directions, or at least in the, in the east. This variance was granted during COVID and therefore is told all the way out to June of twenty twenty-two. So we're still clear to approve it, and I don't want to get into the legal nitty-gritty of, of when, when that would expire. I, I know it's in June of twenty twenty-two. I think you're completely- I, I know it's in June of twenty twenty-two, I think you're completely protected if you pull a building permit um prior to that point. I think also it's worth stating on the record that um it has been the view of the courts in the past that bringing something before another board for a necessary approval that, that precludes construction is also substantive use that could, that act continues the uh life of the permit.
All right, any members of the public, I see Gwyn Morrissey, welcome.
Hi, thanks. Um, I'm Gwyn Morrissey, I'm the chair of the Economic Development and Industrial Commission, and I don't think very many of us here need to be convinced of the value of this project. Um, I'm really excited to see that this plan is moving forward, and I am a thousand percent hooraying the um, the goodbye to hurry, scurry, and the hello to any retail and, and housing for East Hampton, which is at such a premium. Um, it's really very exciting, and I am very pleased to see the plans for even minor shrubberies in front, in back, good, let's hide the cars, let's hide ugly facades, let's make things really um aesthetically pleasing on some of our most trafficked walkways and um where we consider our main business district. So uh, just kudos to everybody who's managing to work this through the whole continuum to make it happen. I look forward to shopping at whoever its tenants are in summer of twenty twenty-two.
Here, here.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions? You can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera or unmute if you have no other options. Uh, I see none.
You wanna put conditions together, cause I am so ready to motion on this one.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna run through the um statutory stuff real quickly, so I'm gonna read our um findings, and I think these are all pretty straightforward, but if any planning board members or planning department has a question based on it, just stop me. Um, first is the project is integrated into the existing terrain, it protects the butters and community amenities, uh, is in harmony with the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood and city, maximizes convenience and safety of pedestrian and vehi- vehicle traffic within the site, uh, separated from the adjacent properties by buffers fencing sufficient to minimize visual and noise impacts, has parking areas not located in the front setback to the first extent possible, does not place excessive demands on municipal water or waste disposal infrastructure, prevents runoff and flooding to the extent possible, installs any new utility connections underground, that's all gonna be underground, is that right, Terry?
Uh, overhead power.
Okay. Is that like a waivable thing, Curtis, under the bylaw?
So those are not required, th- those are um development standards, and any and all development standards are subject to the board's uh opinion. Eight-three-three.
Yeah, okay. Um, further findings, um residential units must be above the ground floor and consider the preservation and reuse of existing buildings. And then finally, under our site plan approval, we have to confirm that uh it conforms with all relevant state, city, and federal regulations, protects the butters and city amenities, provides for convenient and safe vehicle pedestrian movement in and around the site, possesses adequate drainage, protects wetlands and watersheds, mitigates adverse impact on city infrastructure, uh, and provides for off-street parking, loading, unloading, and circulation, integrates into the surrounding landscape by way of design features, minimizes area vegetation removal, and maintains consistency with built environment in regards to dimensional regulations, parking architectural style, and landscaping. So I think all of those were covered, especially if we grant a waiver on the overhead power lines, which I think is pretty minimal here where we're already in downtown, and there's a lot of that going on anyway. Um, any?
Special condition for that, or a part of the motion on that waiver, how, how does that get integrated?
I think we can just approve this, and it's implicit that we're waiving the requirement, so as long as we approve it as is, we can put in the decision that we waive that requirement. Um, as far as conditions, um, I think probably we should put in the condition about no ground floor units, cause that's required by the bylaw, I also occurred to me, we should probably have a condition requiring that they maintain their agreements for adequate parking, just so that that's always gonna be there. And then Curtis, were there other petition, uh, conditions you were talking about?
Yes, and, and uh, so I drafted some i- ideas of conditions for the board, um, and I, I, these are not, these are not public records, so I'm gonna go over all of them now, um, uh, obviously, I invite the board or anybody else from the public to comment on as they see fit. Um, that first one was no dwelling units installed on the ground floor of the proposed development, uh, as that's a condition of the downtown business zone. Um, in order to provide the maximum flexibility for the applicant, uh, I propose a condition, I would propose a condition that says this site plan approval includes approval for any retail and service use permitted by site plan approval in the DB zone per table five dash one of the East Hampton Zone Ordinances. This would mean that in addition to the retail and service uses, this also includes a wide array of different similar low-impact uses, ranging from like carpenter's store to pottery store, other things that are specifically laid in the table of principal uses would have A, similar parking requires, and B, require the same permitting pathway, just in case he has a particular tenant that's identified at some point in the future that we, is as yet unknown by the project. So maximum flexibility for the project. Um, i- in that same spirit, uh, since we don't know what those retail uses are, uh, there's a proposed condition that says this site plan approval includes approval for any signage proposed in conformance with applicable ordinances, including section ten point zero signage, assigns up to a total of seventy-four square feet for all proposed signs in conformance with the DB zone standards on table ten dash two permitted sign uses. Again, we don't know who's going in, we don't know what kind of signage they would need, um, so to grit, to just it, it under note, this would, it would not require an amendment of the site plan approval for them to put in a sign that says come here for retail use.
I think Harry's got a question, Harry?
Yeah, I should have brought up before, but how do you plan on heating this place? Is it gonna be oil heat, is it electric heat, or gas heat, or what is it gonna be?
It's a very good question, I am not sure.
I mean, if it's gonna be oil, they need a tank, where's the tank gonna be, and is there a cellar here, in the back, second floor, first floor, where's that gonna be?
Um, I believe it's gonna be electric at this point, um, because uh the moratorium, they can't use gas, and we're now proposing uh gas tanks out here.
Okay.
There, there certainly is space um for there to be tanks adjacent to the building, since they needed it.
It's a good question.
Okay, Curtis, you have one more condition?
One more condition, uh, again, in the name of flexibility. So right now, the applicant's proposing two different commercial spaces on the ground floor, changing that from two commercial spaces to one commercial space of double area, so one big commercial area in case someone want to knock down the internal dividing wall, would have no implications on the requirements of parking and no other implications on land use. So I would propose that the, the planning board include a condition that says something like this site plan approval anticipates and allows for any configuration of ground floor commercial space possible under applicable ordinances, including conversion from two commercial uses as proposed to a single commercial use comprising the total ground floor area.
Those all make sense to me, Terry, any objection to any of the conditions we all just discussed?
No, that sounds ideal.
And just out of curiosity, if, if there is a tank, does the fire department approve tanks, is that how it works?
Uh, I believe above-ground tanks you get, there is a cer- uh, not a permit, but a, a, a registration, I think.
Okay, so there's some oversight, we don't have to feel like we need to get a firm answer on that. If you end up doing some sort of oil tank, there'll be some oversight.
There is a process that uh can bring those in.
The fire department approves, approves both above-ground and below-ground, the only change would be potentially an above-ground one would need bollards. Um, you know, you could condition that you consider that an insubstantial change, uh, or, you know, just stated on the record and I'll bear it in mind.
Can't imagine they wouldn't do it, it, it seems a fairly redundant.
Yeah, I don't think we need to necessarily make it a condition or anything like that, they're gonna need approval for it either way, and I assume the fire department is better equipped than us to determine what's safe for those anyways.
I would suggest that just, you know, any tanks have to be in conformance with all, all departments.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, any other comments or questions from planning board members? All right.
I motion to approve the site plan uh for the destruction of Hurry, Scurry, and the construction of a new mixed-use and two-bedroom apartment at one eighteen Union Street, including the condition just mentioned by Mister Reynolds, that is a single line stating any tanks require what you stated, the two conditions by Jesse Belter, Tim, and the less than a dozen miraculously conditions from Curtis Wayman.
All right, so voting to approve the site plan approval with conditions, James?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an I, Terry, best of luck on this, this is on the short list of things we never thought would get done. Between this and one Ferry Street, I don't have a list of things can get, get fixed anymore, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, we got a couple other things here. First is request for direct termination of minor change for our friends at Beacon Solar LLC. Is there someone here?
Yes.
There we go, welcome back.
Yeah, it's been since June, I think. But yeah, I'm Brad Saunders with G E I Consultants. The uh, yeah, the, the issue is the security, or not security, the privacy fence uh that would be placed along the southern solar array uh between Maxine Circle and the array. Uh, the fence that was specified and included in the original plans, I guess is uh, has a very long lead time, on the order of four to five months, and it's also uh very costly. And so they're suggesting an alternative design, but actually it's not even so much a design change as it is a, a source change. Uh, the, the suggested alternative would be the same height of eight feet, it would form a solid visual barrier. In fact, the fence that had been approved was a uh perforated uh barrier, so there. There were small holes, but it was perforated. It would be the same color, uh dark green color, and it would occupy the same location. So there's about six hundred and fifty feet of that fence that would be put up, so. And we submitted uh the specifications for the alternative.
So Brad, it sounds like this is going to um look the same to anybody passing by, and will actually probably, if anything, do a better job of blocking noise and visuals, is that fair?
That's, that's correct. Bear in mind, there's also going to be a lot of vegetation on the
Yep.
scene side.
Any comments, questions from planning board members? Any comments or questions from the public? Raise your Zoom hand, turn on your camera, unmute yourself. I see nothing, so we will be looking for a motion.
A motion to determine the minor change for Beacon Solar LLC fifty Florence Road.
Second.
All right, voting to determine that this is a minor change, James?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an I, best of luck, Brad, I assume we'll see you in a few months again for something.
I, 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 I take full ownership, I demanded that they get, they just go over that stuff, I apologize to all present.
I know, that's totally fair, it's better to check off boxes, Brad, best of luck.
Thank you, have a nice holiday, everybody.
Thank you, you too. All right, and Curtis, are we doing the next item covenant at two eighteen East Street, or is that not on for tonight?
No, so let me do a little bit of discussion for the public record, but it is otherwise no, I have no documents for you and nothing else. So um, the board per uh Massachusetts General Law uh, chapter forty-one uh has the right to grant um subdivisions and uh also release subdivisions. Back in uh nineteen sixty-eight, the board granted a subdivision that was never built on East Street, and now that one of the properties is purporting to be sold, um, its deed includes a reference to that covenant, and so they're wondering how they wanna get a release. We are doing research to determine what the board's role is here, you may see it coming before us in January, where we'll, you know, they'll have to come forward and specifically seek its release. The tools for release are the same tools that you would use if you said, ah, this was never built up to standards. Um, but in this case, it'd be uniquely easy because the applicant would agree, um, because it has not been built.
Excellent, all right, so no action yet, but that might come before us again, that sounds good. Uh, we've got nothing else, other than I'll just give another quick reminder that we are on for next Tuesday for a joint meeting with uh ordinance subcommittee.
Yay.
Yay, uh, all right, and with that, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, moving to adjourn, James?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an I, excellent job, everyone, see y'all next week.
See you, guys.
Bye-bye.